She's mad.
She made her man. Something about you, I can understand that. Quite a few announcements tonight. Mr. Jeff Clinkenberry's birthday is tomorrow, July 14th. He is unable to be here tonight due to the passing of his, I think it was his-
Father-in-law.
Father-in-law, yes. William Zudzuski passed away on July 7th. They have Military Honors Ceremony will be held Friday, July 17th at 11:00 PM. Prom start. And that is at the Missouri Veterans Cemetery. It's pretty good late.
11:00 AM?
11:00 AM, yes. Do I say 11:00 PM? Just want to make sure and clarify.
Yeah, Eastern PM.
My problem. That'd be a late start. 11:00 AM, thank you very much. Also, one of our former employees, Toby Schaefer. His wife, Gretchen, passed away on June 21st. So please keep Toby, he's got a 10-year-old son, I think. Keep him in your prayers, too. On to the rest of the announcements. The remainder of the announcements. We have quite a few reappointments and appointments to boards. However, I'd like to introduce Police Chief Mike Lawton. And then he would like to introduce one of our new officers. Chief, come on up.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
It's my honor tonight to introduce to you our newest police officer. He literally started Friday and actually tonight's his first night on patrol. This is Callan Smith. Callan Smith comes to us from Texas County as a deputy there. And also at Christian and Webster, correct? As a reserve deputy and a correctional officer. So he is our proud new officer and I am proud to introduce him to you.
Welcome aboard, sir. And I hope you enjoy it.
And we'll get him to work right away.
Yeah, I'm sure you will, chief.
For the next hour, he'll be working.
Callan Smith, listen to everything he says. We do, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Thank you. On to appointments. I'd like to reappoint Leo Clant to the Housing Authority for a five-year term. Please like to have a motion.
Motion.
Second. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'd also like to reappoint Dorothy Craig to the Housing Authority for a three-year term.
Motion, second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Additionally, I'd like to appoint Sue Watkins to the Housing Authority for a two-year term.
Motion.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to reappoint Brian Van Der Schaaf to the Planning and Zoning Committee for a four-year term.
Motion, second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to reappoint Gary Wilson to the Planning and Zoning Committee as council liaison for a one-year term.
Motion.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? One abstention. Motion carries, 4-0-1. Amen. I'd like to appoint Alan Cuckle or reappoint Alan Cuckle in the Hance Enterprise Zone Board for a five-year term.
Motion, second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. I'd like to reappoint Neil Guyon to the Hance Enterprise Zone for a five-year term.
Motion, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries, 5-0. Thank you. Morse code, I'm confused. I'd like to open it up now to system participation. Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, sign in, and give us your best three minutes. Seeing those citizens, says participation closed. Unless, sir, you want to say something. No? Okay. Welcome back, by the way. Proud mother of Della. Very good. Yes, right. You were supposed to bring her. That's okay. We always have, we have meetings twice a month, so. On the consent agenda, we'd like to have a motion to approve consent agenda.
Motion.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. On a financial report, welcome, Mr. O'Donnell. Please give us an overview, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, everyone. A couple of comments for this evening to go with our June financial reports. First, on the unrestricted cash balances report, we've added a little something. We've added the 2014 data, January through December, as an additional benchmark for council to compare cash balances then and now and see how we've been steadily growing as we've been going along here. Second, on the recap of year-to-date revenue and expenses, the last couple of months, I've been reporting three sets of numbers. Current year-to-dates, previous year-to-date as reported to council, and previous year-to-date final. And we finally figured out why the reported and the final numbers are different. With the help of utility billing supervisor and personnel from Data Technologies, our software maker, we solved the mystery briefly. Journal entries were posted in August for the months of April through July, which is why we have the difference in numbers. Now, why were the journal entries posted? Well, as it turns out, back in March, the utility billing module of our software was, underwent a conversion as to how customer payments are supposed to be recorded in the general ledger from a cash base to accrual basis. So I'm not going to bore you with the jargon. I'll just simply say that the conversion went south and instead, we had various water sewer revenue accounts and our receivables being overstated in the process. The error was discovered and it was fixed using those journal entries that were posted in August. So that's why the true numbers, which are the final numbers, reflect those adjustments as opposed to what was previously reported and overstated. So in comparing our current year-to-date versus our final previous year-to-date, we're doing a heck of a lot better than I thought. So probably have that show up with the July numbers and then hopefully, I'll be able to get back to two sets of numbers for the rest of the year. On to our third point, and a happy one at that. We've got our sales tax numbers in for June and the Department of Revenue collected best month ever. Our general revenue sales tax was $277,933.06. I don't think we've ever hit that before. And Chief Compton will be happy that our fire sales tax hit $27,461.51. We haven't got our motor fuel tax numbers in yet, so I will be discussing further at our second council meeting in two weeks. And item last, speaking of which, regarding the 2014 city audits, we hope to have Marshall Decker, our independent auditor, here at council meeting in two weeks to present the reports and answer questions from council or anyone else present. At that time, we want to request council approval of the audit report in order to file with our various bondholders and complete our compliance obligations. And with that, I await your questions.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. O'Donnell. Anything at all? Seeing none, need a motion to approve financial report? Motion, second. Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Of course, staff, Mr. Chriskey.
Hello, sir.
Mr. Derrickson.
Hello, sir.
All right. Fantastic. Welcome, Mr. Keelings. Has the hot weather helped the Aquatic Center?
It has. Hopefully, we'll make up for a rainy week last week.
We had a bit of rain, didn't we?
Had a good weekend. Future community events for the remainder of July, now through July 17th, is Todd Academy. Its grades is two to five. Those classes are at 10:30, at 12:30 at the Republic Community Center. Also, now through July 22nd, is our Arthritis Foundation Exercise Program. That program is held on Wednesdays at 1:30 at the Community Center. July 17th is the last day to register for Cheer Republic. That's for grades three through six. July 17th, this coming July 17th, this coming Friday, is Republic United Springfield Cardinals. We have some tickets still available. The game of time is at 7:10 in the Hammond Field. July 24th is the last day to register for Fall Coed Adult Softball and Fall Men's Adult Softball. Those leagues begin second or third week of August, played at the Bourbon and White Foundation softball complex. July 30th is Senior Movie Day. The movie is to be announced, but it's at 3:00 PM. It's a free event. And I do want to add one more. July 31st is our next AMP event. That'll be Dickerson Park Zoo Live, DeGruffalo, and Room on the Broom. Starts at 7:15 PM.
What?
DeGruffalo and Room on the Broom. If you haven't heard of them or seen them, they're shorts, like little shorts, animated shorts, but they're really good. Maybe, you might not be interested.
You'd like that. I agree with Charlie. I may like that. It actually may keep his attention for a while.
Only 27 minutes.
He did say shorts.
That's why I mentioned it, Mr. Harder.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Keelings. Appreciate it. Work Commission's a committee schedule board of adjustments, August 6th, Capitol premise, July 22nd, City Council, July 27th, August 10th, Planning and Zoning, July 20th. On a new business, we'd like to have a motion to have the first reading of bill number 15-17.
Motion, second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
In the ordinance of the City Council of the City of Republic, Missouri, to amend Title VII, Chapter 700 of the Republic Municipal Code by repealing and replacing Section 715.190, said section to be titled Bath, Oil, Grease, and Sand.
Thank you, mayor. Welcome, Mr. Brock. There's no review, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Staff is requesting revision and expansion on existing code regarding grease traps. As noted in the ordinance, we have a couple paragraphs in our existing code, very basic. Does not provide a lot of depth or requirements for cleaning. We've reached a point where we need to be much more sophisticated in regards to grease trap. What we have with, if the ordinance, are two elements, really. One is a code revision included in the ordinance. The other is a comprehensive technical policy, and that is also attached in your packet. The non-domestic sewer customers that would be affected by this regulation, restaurants, institutions that have commercial appliances, that would include schools, churches, daycares, city facilities, car washes, maintenance garages. And we're wanting to take a very slow approach in the adoption. Our recommendation today is a first read, any discussions or questions that the council may have, and then we're asking for the issue to be tabled until September 14th. And our plan is to spend the summer visiting each and every facility that will be affected, seeing what grease trap or interceptor that they may have on hand, what their practices are for cleaning, their menu. In other words, really create a, the beginning of a long-term relationship with these locations so that when we come back in September, we have specific details as to how any location may be affected. The delay we're asking for also provides time for restaurant owners and managers to give us feedback, to give you feedback if they care to do so, and we think that the result will be, may be amended from what you have today, but will be a better product. The big question here is why we need to do this. And I'm going to ask for a little help with some visual aids here. Fats and grease begin to coagulate as soon as it leaves the facility. Temperature gets down below 140 and you see that gelling begin to occur. And I'd ask you just to have a glance and pass that on. We're going to have a number of handouts. The first picture there is an eight-inch sewer main that has about two-inch capacity left that has been filled in with grease and fats that have solidified. Sometimes that will occur very close to the generator. Sometimes it makes its way down the system. Next item I'm handing out here is a map of problem areas. These are locations in the sewer system, both sewer mains and manholes, where our maintenance records show recurring problems with grease buildup. That buildup can and often does result in a blockage. Next item I'm handing out is our locations where we have had bypasses, overflows, that we've been required to report to the Department of Natural Resources. And as these pass by, you're going to see kind of recurring locations, and that is Highway 60, Heinz Street, locations that serve our commercial and institutional buildings. So far to date, we've not had any formal enforcement back from DNR on any of these bypasses. What is quite common, or much more common, I should say, are claims against the city. And this map here shows a number of locations where we've had a claim that was directly related to a blockage or overflow due to grease buildup. And most of these, in fact, all of these occurred on private property. Now, those are not required to be turned into the state, but they do result in problems for homeowners or business owners, and they result for problems with the city if they decide to file a claim against us. Probably the most notable claim that you may remember, South Lynn Avenue, 544, or I'm sorry, North Lynn, corner of Lynn and Heinz, had a substantial sewer claim there. Now, our easily identifiable expense was a $5,000 insurance deductible. How that affected future year rates, we don't know, but I have to think that that loss was taken into account. As these materials work their way down the system, they'll end up in our pump stations. And I'll hand out a couple pictures here. The grease cap that builds up in our pump stations. Those are, requires a physical cleaning and how do we do that? It's a terminology or the phrase we use is called dipping. Essentially, just a net on a pole and you reach down in there and bring it out, and that goes into a commercial dumpster. For the grit and grease that ends up at the treatment plant, we have a building dedicated to that. This was built as part of the expansion in 2001. The itemized cost for that building, $535,000, probably closer to $550,000 when you add in the additional expenses that came along with that debt service mobilization, bond issuance cost. That facility right now is going through an overhaul. We have it shut down, thorough cleaning and repairs to all the equipment. And part of that chore is scraping all of the grit and grease that has built up over the last 15 years or so. That is done by hand as well. And we have next to the building a 40-yard roll-off dumpster. You'll see by the pictures, that is a little better than half-full. We will fill that to the point of being behauled away, and we'll start on another before we're done. Typically, when that grit and grease building is in service, there's an automated process that deposits this material in a commercial dumpster and it's hands-off. However, on a recurring basis, 10 to 15 years, we're going to have to do the same thing, tear that down. I brought a sample. I'm not going to take it out of the double-bagged container.
Thank you.
What I will tell you is, the trash company required us to have a chemical analysis. Normally, they take this away in the small commercial dumpster and it goes just in a regular landfill. This quantity, they wanted imperative, empirical proof that it was either a common waste or a special waste. And so Craig is here tonight. Craig took the sample down to the lab that we use. They happen to be in the process of changing locations and were not quite set up to do the test that day. We had another staff member that went down the following day, and they said, "Please take your sample back until we are ready to test it because it is a very, very disgusting odor to it." So I hope that I've hit on the why here. As I mentioned, we have Craig Lesby here tonight. We also have Jerry Kendall. Jerry is working with us at internship through the end of the year. Jerry was very instrumental in polishing this up for us. We've actually had a desire to implement this for a couple of years now, just with some of the other legislative efforts. We know this is a big deal. We know it's going to impact the commercial businesses. We didn't want to compete with some of the other proposals that were going out there. And so, timing-wise, with Jerry available, we felt like this was appropriate time to get started on this.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock?
Mr. Harder?
It's not really a question, but through legislation, they came to this legislation a couple of years ago, is that correct, about the containment of FOGs? Is that correct? Put the emphasis on it.
We have a requirement to develop and implement, it's called a CMOM. And Craig, a CMOM is Passion Maintenance Operations, excuse me, I forgot the last down, but your capacity, maintenance operation, then?
Management.
Management. Thank you. And as cities grow and develop and become more sophisticated, the requirements of that will change. So there's not a specific state mandate, but I can say there is an expectation from the state level that we will address this in a much more strict fashion than we have in the past.
So this will put us ahead of the curve?
This will put us ahead of the curve. And I don't think that this is going to be anything that particularly folks in the food service industry are going to be unfamiliar with. This is a standard practice in the industry. I know we have some older facilities here in town that will be affected more than others. And I do want to bring this up. I'm sorry, I omitted this first time around. I mentioned before, we want to take a long-term perspective on this. So there are provisions in our policy that allows for an implementation that's specific to a sewer customer. And we want to couple that with a financial assistance plan. Essentially, a low-interest loan that would be made available to pay for a portion of those modifications that might be necessary, and then you would pay that back on monthly installments with your sewer bill. So conjunction with, you know, our perspective is, one step is better than no step. So allowing folks time to make the changes that they need to make the changes, giving them an opportunity to receive financial assistance, we think those two things combined, if you're looking at two years or three years or four years down the road, is the best approach, detective. Thank you.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
I got a question.
Yes, Mr. Wilson.
To get an idea of the expense you're talking about, on page 37, I believe, it shows four different sites of grease traps. What does those run, from small to large?
A small under-sink trap would probably run... A large interceptor, concrete interceptor that needs to go exterior building, you're probably talking somewhere between $5,000 and $7,000. And we don't expect that the older facilities will meet everything to a T. Typically, you want your piping, your waste piping separated. The waste from your restaurants is separated from the waste drains from your kitchen. That's ideal. The older buildings, you just can't expect that to be, those buildings to be plumbed that way. And so, as I mentioned before, we're prepared to find those exceptions, grant those exceptions, and take the small victory instead of swinging for the fences.
Are there some questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock?
Are there condition requirements for heavy metal discharge and things like that to a waste park?
We have a separate section under the code for industrial users, which would be applicable, and those are already codified. And we do not have any customers that qualifies for that at the moment.
Mr. Brock, is there a list of all the businesses that we have?
Our preliminary list is 100 and approximately 138 that we've identified as condemned.
That's restaurants, schools, and churches.
Restaurants, schools, churches, auto, garages, car washes. And we think that number's going to shrink pretty significantly once we do a site business. Those are just, that's just raw data pulled out of the business licensing files.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Addition's quite good, Ms. Poole.
You mentioned churches. What does that entail for them?
Well, first of all, we don't think this will affect the small churches. The process we would go through, do they have commercial equipment? Do they have a dishwasher, laptop, grill? What kind of meals are they preparing? How often are they serving? Most of the facilities are just not going to, not going to rise to the level of requiring modifications. But it's going to take individual visits to go out and see how each church might be operating.
What would the cost possibly be to the smaller churches and then to the larger? What's the difference? Do you know yet?
I don't. Mrs. Poole, I'd like to answer that in September, when we've actually visited these places. I think the majority of the churches and we'll probably have a number of the garages that are the same. Garage, just, the older garages just weren't built with floor drains, and so they won't need to have a grit and grease separator. The smaller churches that may have residential kitchen essentially, those just won't rise to the level. And in large part, it's going to be performance-based. Part of the inspection will be to go out and look for any grease buildup outside of that building. So if it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. It doesn't quack.
You wouldn't inspect the model, right?
Yes, ma'am. And that's part of what we want to do here, is be consistent with all of our customers.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Mr. Brock has requested this to be postponed to the second read, and actually, the second read don't really take place at the next council meeting. However, he has asked that be postponed until September 14th meeting. So with that request, we need a motion to postpone to the second, the second reading to September 14th.
Second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. If you have additional questions, comments between now and then, please contact Mr. Brock. Thank you, sir. On other business and resolutions, resolution number 15-R-44, resolution to the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the execution of the equipment rental agreement with Murphy Tractor Equipment Company. Would you like to have a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, second. Mr. Brock gives the overview, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Since 2011, we have rented one of our backhoes through this Murphy Tractor. We are requesting a renewal on that rental agreement, still the same rates as we first obtained in 2011, $900 a month. And this extension will run through March of 2016. I'd like to add that when we roll into budget analysis for 2016, we'll reevaluate whether market conditions have changed and it might be, whether it might be wiser to purchase that equipment outright as opposed to the lease that you see here today.
Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock? Anything at all? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Any abstentions? Any extensions? carries 6-0, thank you very much. On the next item, resolution number 15-R-45, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, awarding a bid for street resurfacing, authorizing the execution of contract agreement. Would like to have a motion?
Motion, second.
Motion, second. Give the overview, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an annual process for us, our street resurfacing. We're a bit late this year, or we're a bit delayed. We spent some time with last year's contractor trying to negotiate renewal. We were unable to come up with agreeable pricing. We spent some time looking back at resurfacing done through Green County, but found that their terms were not very favorable. We felt we could get better pricing going out for bid, and the results of the bid process you see here today, we've done just that. We went for sealed bids. We have three responses. These are the primary asphalt companies here in southwest Missouri, Blevins Asphalt, AIPAC Missouri, and Jurnikon Construction. Our low bidder, by a pretty good percentage, was Blevins Asphalt. And if you look at the unit pricing and extension there, the bulk of our contract goes towards new pavement. And as we typically do when we get our bids in, we go back and look at our budgeted roadways and look for ways to save money or to extend the amount of work that we're doing. And on page two of the exhibit, I've included a table that illustrates the original budget appropriation for each street segment. We've gone back in and estimated projected cost at Blevins bid pricing, and we've found that we can do some additional street segments and still stay within our budget. So our resolution tonight awards the bid to Blevins, authorizes the execution of our standard public work contract, and then authorizes us to begin work on the street segments that you see here. I've got one asterisk item at the bottom of the list, Lafayette. If the installed quantities come in, as we've estimated, we'd like to include that at the end of the, end of our construction period, but we'll monitor that, and if we're hedging too close, then we would defer that to a 2016 proposal.
Fair enough. Questions, comments, discussion for Mr. Brock?
That is commonly known as Hazel Team Road, very highly trafficked, just number of cars per day is probably one of our busiest city streets that we have. And it needs to.
Additional questions, comments, discussion?
We've always been satisfied with Blevins doing the work, Craig?
Yes, ma'am. They've done a good job for us. We're doing milling and fabric again like we did on Main and Ellen Street. We've learned a little bit. We've tightened up our specs a little bit. We think it's kind of worked very well this year.
I've had some comments that they said, we should have used somebody else. So I'm just curious that we make sure that we haven't had any problems with them. I've never known that we had a problem.
No. Like any other contractor, you have to, you have to have someone on the job site doing the inspection, doing the oversight.
Additional questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any extensions? Motion carries 6-0, thank you, sir.
Did it leave your sample up there?
The mayor's office.
Yeah. And a drawer. And a chair.
So termite. Thank goodness. If it does get rid of termites, we might have a solution. On the next item, resolution number 15-R-46, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Republic of Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to execute, authorize, execute a non-binding engagement letter with Stifel Nicolaus and Company for preliminary underwriting services. Would like to have a motion?
Motion.
Motion, second. Mr. Chriskey gives the overview, sir.
Over the course of the last few years, the Security and Exchange Commission has really tightened up on what you can and cannot do with issuing bonds, municipal bonds for public projects. So as a result, to even get any preliminary information on any funding opportunities that we would have for public projects, for street and road improvements, refunding of any of our current debt, we've got to have a non-binding engagement letter with an underwriting firm so that they are able to help us work through the process. So it's a, it's a no-cost item. We're not bound to this particular company if we were to come forward with a project. It just enables us to correctly and properly engage them in their services to help us look at these different options that may come forward. We've worked with Stifel Nicolaus in the past on a number of different projects. They've done the last two refundings for the city, and then they also have done some other projects. I believe they did the, one of the, either the Aquatic Center or the community building. Irregardless, same people, they've always done a very good job for us, and we've spoken to them. They provide us with the wording that needs to be in the engagement letter, and all it takes right at the moment is for city council approval of a resolution to enter into that non-binding agreement.
Questions, comments, discussion? Anything at all? Fair enough. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Any extensions? Motion carries. That concludes our regularly scheduled business. Would like to have a motion to go into opening our executive session under RSMO 610.021.2.
Motion.
Motion in the second to go into executive session. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilson?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Rasheer?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Councilmember Poole?
Aye.
Councilmember Harrelson?
Aye.
Motion carries 6-0. This portion of the meeting is adjourned. We'll take a five-minute recess. Thank you very much. David.
Hey, David.